Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, April 6, 2022. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am City Council President Kate McAllister presiding. Also present are Councilors Joel Espero, Andy Groth, and Justin Dick. Mayor Rongstead and Councilors Deb Rule and Jason Welker are absent this evening. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Are there any announcements from council? We've been off two weeks, so now you have nothing to say?
Don't get them started.
Right. I have a proclamation to read this evening for International Dark Sky Week. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of a natural night sky is a shared heritage of all humankind, whereas the experience of standing beneath a starry night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe and encourages a growing interest in science and nature, especially among young people and out-of-area visitors within the local communities. Whereas light pollution has scientifically established economic and environmental consequences which result in significant impacts to the ecology and human health of all communities. Whereas 80% of the world's population, including the majority of people in North Idaho, live under a dome of light pollution, excessive artificial lighting at night that disrupts natural darkness and may never experience the visual wonder or ecological and health benefits of living under a dark sky. Whereas light pollution represents a waste of natural resources amounting to roughly $3 billion per year of wasted energy in the United States and contributes to diminished energy security. Whereas Idaho is home to Central Idaho Dark Sky Reserve, America's first gold-tier international dark sky reserve, Craters of the Moon National Monument, a silver-tier international dark sky park, and the city of Ketchum, a designated international dark sky community. Whereas as a result of their pristine geography, the resort cities of Idaho, of which Sandpoint is one, rely on tourism as the major portion of their economic well-being and would benefit from the untapped and booming economic benefits of astrotourism. Whereas Idaho is home to dozens of nocturnal wildlife species, including the great gray owl and the fl- what? Flamulated owl? Is that correct? Okay, good. Sorry. It was going so well until then. Both of which are listed as sensitive species by the United States Forest Service, with these species relying on undisturbed night environments to hunt, mate, and thrive. And whereas the International Dark Sky Association headquartered in Tucson, Arizona, the globally-recognized authority on light pollution has created International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of light pollution and provide free education, resources, and solutions to the public to encourage the protection of and enjoyment of dark skies and responsible outdoor lighting. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of Mayor Shelby Rongstead, I, Kate McAllister, President of the City Council of Sandpoint, Idaho, do hereby declare April 22 through the 30th, 2022, as International Dark Sky Week in the city of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Idaho. I ask each resident to join in not only observing and pondering upon this important week, but also in raising awareness and support for protecting our precious dark sky resources. Proclaim the sixth day of April, 2022, in the city of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Idaho. Kate McAllister, City Council President, for Shelby Rongstead Mayor. And could I please have Sue Ann Ellis come up? And I'll meet you at the podium.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take this moment to introduce the other IDA advocates. We have my son Kodiak and James, and James and his wife drove up from Corde lane to help support us in this special occasion. So on behalf of the International Dark Sky Association, Kodiak, James, and I would like to thank the mayor, as he unfortunately is not present, and you, the city council. Not only are we very privileged to live in such a beautiful place, but it's really exciting to see how this city comes together as a community to protect its natural resources. This proclamation highlights the role dark skies play in the health and well-being of all living things and acts as a stone dropped into a pool of water with potentially infinite ripples of inspiration and precedent radiating locally, regionally, nationally, and even globally. With that, James, Kodiak, and I invite you all to participate in the local family event scheduled through our library for International Dark Sky Week's theme of Discover the Night. We also invite you to consider taking Sandpoint's commitment to dark skies a step further by joining the 24 national and 12 international cities and towns that have earned the designation of International Dark Sky Community and becoming North Idaho's first. Such a step would strengthen Sandpoint's commitment to the preserving of its pristine beauty as well as creating new economic benefits such as opening to the rapidly growing niche market of astrotourism. Well, thank you for this proclamation and thank you for helping keep our skies as pristine as our landscapes.
Thank you very much. I believe we have an employee promotion announcement. I would like to call Chief Corey Coon to the podium, please.
Not really a promotion, but more of a, just to get to know you. So two things for announcements for the council's knowledge. For you guys are aware, we may have lost a car in the last few months due to a fire. That may ring true. With that, if you notice in the parking lot, we have two black unmarked vehicles. We took the insurance money, looked for ways that we could spend that to benefit us. We found two used vehicles from the Idaho State Police that we were able to purchase fully outfitted. So we've got those there. They're going to be put into the fleet and be used, which is really nice. So just so you know, if you hear rumors of two black cars running around, those are ours. So.
Just no black helicopters.
No helicopters.
We've been warned.
We'll put that in next year's budget, but for this year, we're out of those. So they're going to be with our admin, so usually the administration will be using them, and the patrol guys will stick to the marked units. Really, this was, the fire was going to do a promotion, but they had to put it off. We wanted to do just an announcement for council and for those in attendance. Our goal this year is really to get the new officers that ability to come into city council, get their face seen, kind of get an introduction done, some of the things they've accomplished, if their families here, kind of introduce them. And so really today's just an opportunity to do that. And instead of me going through and explaining that stuff, I actually tasked it with our Lieutenant Chamberlain and Sergeant Ziegler, who left for a call. So he, I think it's all going to get tagged onto our lieutenant. So if you guys haven't met Lieutenant Chamberlain, he's our six-foot-seven officer. I say that because everybody knows Chamberlain because of his height. He's been with us for almost 20 years. Or is it over? Just over 20 years now. Time flies while you're having fun. So I'm going to turn it over to him, and he's going to actually introduce the two of our newer officers, kind of some of the stuff they've accomplished, where they came from, and where they're going shortly. So Stephen?
All right. So these are our two newest officers. Officer Bard's been here a little bit longer, so I'll start with him. Officer Bard actually started as a reserve with us in 2020, January of 2020. Right as COVID was really starting to hit the Sandpoint areas when he jumped in as a reserve, he showed incredible dedication to being part of the job, being out with the guys as much as he possibly could during COVID, which of course made it really difficult. That really helped solidify his spot when we went to the hiring process to say, hey, we know who he is and we know how dedicated he is to not only the police department, but the city. So that led to him getting a full-time job August 30th of this last year. Since then, he just very recently completed our field training and evaluation program, which is a minimum 14-week program over four different phases, basically learns all about becoming a police officer and how we like to police in Sandpoint, right? Not things from other places. This is his first law enforcement job, which is really nice for us. One of the things, or two of the things that we've really noticed is positive attributes. Him, he possesses throughout the process, he does very well interacting with the public, which as we all know is such a huge thing for law enforcement these days, community interaction. And the other thing is, he actually writes a really good report. It's incredibly concise. It's very detailed. He has everything in there that he really needs. He actually is going to be leaving us here in not too long to head to the academy down in Meridian, or we'll lose him unfortunately for the summer. But when he comes back, he'll be ready to hit the road and off running.
Nice.
In his off time, he likes to spend time with his wife of 10 years, Jessica, who is currently dealing with her four children, so she's not here today. So he's pretty busy doing that. In his off time, he enjoys fishing, outdoor activities, specifically fishing. And of course, four kids, he usually likes to spend time with his kids. So that's Officer Bard.
Good to meet you.
My left is Officer Bentley. Officer Bentley is actually brand-new to us. He started initially with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department in California. We like to say he's from a few hundred miles south of Boise, which is like the Idaho area. It might be a little further south than that. So a little bit. So he started three, did three years with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. He actually got dual sworn between their detention and patrol, worked detention down there before realizing that the rat race wasn't really for him. So moved up to Cootney County, actually got hired on with the Sheriff's Department there, worked in the jail there for about a year and a half before realizing that being in the jail all the time wasn't really what he was looking for. He actually wanted to be out on the road interacting with the public, so applied with us and was hired. He's been with us for almost two full months. He's actually in the second phase of our field training and evaluation program. He's out with one of our officers, actually working nights right now. His positive attributes actually, his probably most positive is in the back, Chloe, his wife of two years. So she's here to support him today, which of course, family is super important to us at the police department. So we're great, we're very grateful that she's here to support him. He is an outdoorsman, loves being outdoors, anything outdoors-related. And with him, we've noticed that he's very eager to learn. He tries to absorb absolutely anything he can, which for us is wonderful. It helps that learning curve. He gets through the process really quick, and he's very personable. Anytime he interacts with somebody, he's the kind of guy, kind of like Kelton Groth, will just come up and talk to you, and it's just super personable. So that's Officer Bentley.
Welcome.
Any questions for either of the officers?
Very excited for you guys. Welcome to Sandpoint.
I was going to say, if you have a softball-type question, it's okay. We're out. We're going to defer those to Jennifer. Fastball. But we'll take this off. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Obviously, the police know you.
Moving on.
Do business, please, not old business.
Excuse me. Are there any other announcements from staff?
Oh, yes, Council President. I have a number of announcements tonight because hopefully we are beyond first winter, second winter, third winter, mud season, and maybe we are officially in spring. I had a press release going out earlier this week about this and then went, well, I better hold off on all of this. So it will be going out before the end of the week, but wanted to cover all the announcements for council and public participating tonight. Next week is branch pickup week, which is much needed after some of the wind we had earlier this week. So for residents who have branches to be picked up, they need to be out on the street by April 10th for pickup throughout the week. Our crews go all throughout town to pick up branches. But please don't call us on April 14th and say you missed the branch pickup. Could they come back by? We try to get through all of town. And as you'll hear in my other announcements, we've got a lot of other spring cleaning that we're doing throughout the city ourselves. So we have this one week dedicated to branch pickup. So the guidelines for branch pickup in town is stack the brush and branches lengthwise in the street along the curb. So they do go in the street. Please don't put them on lawns. And we are not at leaf pickup. We are at branch pickup in the spring. So leaf pickup was in the fall. So bag leaves, piles of leaves, we are not picking up leaves this time of year. It'll have to be mulch for you until fall. Our maximum branch diameter is four inches, and please, no branches, i.e. tree limbs, longer than six feet. So we do pick up a range, but no longer than six feet. So it fits into our, our crews can pick it up and it fits into our equipment. Please don't mix brush piles with, with things like, again, like leaves, grass clippings, building materials. We are not picking that up. Timber, we're not picking up commercial contractor-generated tree waste for just picking up branches for this particular pickup. So again, please have them out on the 10th. So by the end of the weekend, we're supposed to have a lovely weekend. So hopefully we can all get to our branches and our crews will be out next week. With spring and all of our winters and our mud season, the potholes show up. So we are in pothole season officially. Our roads are notorious for heaving, cracking, and opening up potholes during the spring. Some of the challenges are local soils, and we have a lot of silt and sand, which makes our soils vulnerable to frost and the impacts of frost. So as our temperatures are coming up, we tend to see that our once-frozen roads begin to thaw from the top down. And as the ice lenses are thawing out, meltwater gets trapped, and that causes us to start to get saturation in lower levels and potholes to open up. So we are out identifying potholes, and we'll be out fixing potholes throughout the spring. But a reminder to community members about our Engage Sandpoint apps and contact options. If you're seeing potholes, if you're seeing issues throughout the city, please be our eyes and ears and help us with identifying issues. And so if you haven't downloaded our Engage Sandpoint app on your mobile phone, it's in the iTunes Store, it's in the Google Play Store, and you can report these issues. If you're standing there, it actually sends us the exact location, and so we can get out there and get it on our fix-it list. You can also get to it off of our website. So please get reporting potholes to us. Street sweeping, or we're sweeping as well. So that is back in full swing. Our crews are out scheduled and sweeping on a daily basis, Monday through Friday. So they are coming through town. And if you see areas that particularly after a windstorm need swept again, don't worry, our crews will be back throughout the week. So just for information, street sweeping for us in the city occurs throughout spring, summer, and fall. So this is the start of weekly sweeping throughout the city, and it will continue through fall until we're looking at winter weather again. We also had a discussion at our leadership team meeting this morning about restriping of city streets with sand that has gone down over the winter and just use and all of the ice and snow. Our painting starts to become rather faint this time of year. So we do have a contractor, we're in final stages of getting that contract finalized and fit into their schedule. So it will likely be the later part of May before street sweeping occurs, but we do have that scheduled. And we will also be doing some painting of lines and touch-up if needed down at City Beach as well as at Sand Creek Trail. We were talking about that this morning. We've got a couple races coming up there this spring. So we'll be doing touch-up there as well. Park restrooms, people are already out in the parks, and our restrooms are already open this year. So we have been open for the past few weeks at City Beach, War Memorial Field, and Lakeview Park. We have porta-potties down at Traverse Park, and we will have restrooms fully open next week. We've got a water line leak. We've got to repair first. So Travers will be our last restroom to open. It'll be next week. If the public has not already picked up on that, the city now owns an RV park down at City Beach, our City Beach RV park. This will be our first year operating that. That is the, was the Sandpoint RV park that was operated as part of the Best Western Edgewater down at City Beach, but with our land swap, the RV park transferred over to the city and again will be future home of parking for a new boat launch. But in the meantime, the RV park is very popular and is a revenue asset to our park system. So all revenues received through the RV park will stay within our park system and go to support maintenance and capital improvements throughout the park system. We are in final stages of getting our online reservation system going. It will be going live this Friday. And so for those who sign up for our parks and recreation programs online through our REC1 program, we'll be using the same program for the RV park. So people will be able to go online, make reservations for the RV park. And we have adopted rates that council had adopted as part of our fee structure last summer. So we're pretty well set to go with the RV park. We have a couple on our consent agenda tonight. We have a couple of lease agreements, one for Farmer's Market, the second for Festival at Sandpoint. But I would be remiss in noting too that we are processing special event permits. We're well over 30-plus events that we've already got coming through our permitting system this year. We usually are more in the range of 15 to 20. So events are already hitting us hard and heavy this year. Lost in the 50s, we've had a meeting this week. We've been working closely with Carolyn and her crew, and we anticipate that permit will be issued this Friday. So it is happening this year. And a reminder about Lost in the 50s because people get curious about vendor booths and opportunities with Lost in the 50s. It's been a few years since we've had an event. So a reminder how that works. Carolyn has a few vendors that are authorized through the event themselves and are set up on private property as part of private property they're using for Lost in the 50s. There are no Lost in the 50s reserves, pretty much the core of our downtown for the event. And so any vendors looking to set up or use sidewalks, any city right-of-way in the downtown core, we have a designated location for that. Vendor booths are on Main Street. We have room for 10 vendors. It's first come, first served. We will be getting a press announcement out about that probably later this week as well. So those reservations come through our offices here at the city, and there are only 10 of those that are available. So I know people are interested. You can't just set up throughout the downtown core and take advantage of the permitted event. It is permitted for Lost in the 50s. So you either need to be with Carolyn, one of her vendors, on someone's private property that's not part of the event. In the public right-of-way, you must be on Main Street at one of our 10 designated locations. So Lost in the 50s, Carolyn's expecting back to like peak numbers that we've seen. It's been probably about a decade before they saw peak numbers of 700-plus cars. This is looking like one of those years. So it should be great Lost in the 50s. Hopefully our weather holds out. And then finally, you'll be hearing later tonight on our agenda, an update from our Tree Committee and from our consultant on our Urban Forestry Master Plan. And there is an opportunity for the public to get involved with giving us input into that plan. We are launching, we'll have posted up our Urban Forestry Survey tomorrow. It will be up on our website, our Facebook page, our Engage Sandpoint mobile app, and it will be informing the master planning process you'll be hearing about tonight. Members of the public can also come into City Hall. We have a kiosk here in City Hall for people that don't have internet access or want help with doing the survey. We have two kiosks here in City Hall. So people are welcome to come in as well. That's what I have for tonight.
Great. Thank you. I'm so happy about the street striping. People can't hear me yell at them in my car, but I'm yelling in my car. Get over! And yes, though, a week at the chamber, we probably get 10 calls a day about Lost in the 50s. So, and we've been getting them for over a month and a half. So I'm sure it's going to be, it's going to be a big deal, battening down the hatches. Thank you very much, Jennifer. We will now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address council regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a sign-up form and hand it to the clerk. The forms are available on the table by the door. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, please raise your hand. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to the council or to staff, and do not approach the dais. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes, and there'll be a big giant clock right there that you can see. Madam Clerk, is there anyone who would like to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Madam President, John Elsa.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Elsa. I live at 1306 Lake Street in Sandpoint. I wanted to come before the city council. It's been an issue I've had for years with snow removal, specifically sidewalks. I walked from Panhandle Special Needs in January 1st to my home down here on Lake Street, and the amount of sidewalks that weren't cleared is ridiculous. There is an ordinance on snow removal in a timeframe that it has to be done. Panhandle Special Needs has folks that have disabilities, and they use Boyer for teaching these people a correct way of crossing the street. They also use the grocery store there to teach them so that they can be independent. Across the street from there is also the Padre High School. The sidewalk had not been shoveled at all this winter from Spruce all the way to Larch and up to Sixth Avenue from North Boyer. Not once. So I have given you each a packet here of people in the community, health organizations, the senior center, Bisney, asking that you do something to enforce the laws that run the books. Personally, I feel that if you folks are going to waste your time up there making ordinances and no one enforces them, what are you doing? So it would be really good to start enforcing this. I know that I have come before the code enforcement officers before, and it's kind of shined on. And I didn't say anything for a while, but this winter was terrible. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else?
No, Madam President.
And no one on Zoom?
No.
Thank you. This concludes the public forum for this evening's meeting. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $727,531.88 for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none, may I have a motion? I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
This will be a roll-call vote.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. With no old business on the agenda this evening, we'll move on to new business. We had planned for a presentation from Urban Renewal Board this evening, but there was an issue with availability, so we will not have the presentation. The 2021 report was provided in the meeting packet and is also available at the city website. That's unfortunate. Moving on, next is an announcement of the planned activities in celebration of Arbor Day this year and an overview and update on our Urban Forestry Program master planning efforts. I will now yield the floor to Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Council President. I will have Maeve come up and members of our Tree Committee who are here. And Maeve, I'll leave it to you to introduce Jim Plot, who is here for the Urban Forestry Master Plan. And council members up at the dais, I gave you an outline that Jim had provided for the Urban Forestry Master Plan, so you can see all of the components, and he'll be covering that in his presentation tonight. So.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, council members. I have tonight two members of our Urban Tree Committee. We have Sharon Lewis and Bob Wilson, and Bob is actually the president. And Sharon, I believe you've been part of the committee for a while. And Sharon, I believe you've been part of the committee for a long.
Over ten years.
Four or ten years, that's substantial amount of volunteering. So we have a lot of updates for you. I'm actually gonna turn it over to you, Bob, and update everybody. And then I'm gonna tell you a little bit more of the details on Arbor Day and then jump to Jim.
Thank you, members of the City Council for this time. We've been on the, a number of us have been on the tree committee for many years now, and I've kind of been just operating in the background. So I appreciate the opportunity to to come right up here and meet face to face. Yeah, I'm Bob Wilson. I'm chair of the Sandpoint Tree Committee. The tree committee is established by city ordinance, can have between five and nine members. We currently have seven, so there are two vacancies. We would be glad to find more people if they are interested and willing. Members of the tree committee, you may recognize some of these names because they're active in the community, but Eileen Atkinson, Bill Love, Rich Del Carlo, Gail Lister, Sharon Lewis is here joining us, and Molly McCann, as well as myself. And the majority of these people have been on the committee for more than ten years. So we have a very dedicated, dedicated group here. The purpose of the committee is really just to provide advice and support to the city forester and the urban cities, urban forestry program. But the establishment of this committee also meets one of the requirements of being, of Sandpoint being a Tree City USA. There are four requirements that, one is that they meet a certain spending amount on urban forestry and that that's that they celebrate Arbor Day and that they read a proclamation. And then they have this tree committee. So so all these things fit together to make, to accredit Sandpoint as a Tree City USA. And I think that's something that a lot of people value. They say that they see that Tree City USA sign, and they realize that this is not just a town of streets, buildings, and power lines. It's a living community and a thriving community. We have a number of projects that we've been working on over the years. We have a tree planting program called Neighbor Woods. And that was started with Stephen Drinkard when he was in the city forester. And over the years, we've probably planted eight hundred or more trees in the city. These are all in the city right of way. And I think that's a, it's a very highly visible program. I think it's one of the things that more, more of the citizens of this community are aware of that the, that the city is doing to support their trees and their urban forest. And I think it's a greatly appreciated program. We're, the committee also does activities to promote the program, to promote what the city is doing to care for the trees in the city right of way and in the parks. This year, this is probably the third or is it fourth year of the library display or so? Yeah, anyway, each year we put together a display for the library. And one of our members, Gail Lister, is an artist, and she's kind of takes the lead on this. And Sharon has contributed a lot as well. And it's actually up now in the library, so I haven't been by there recently. Go have a look at the, the library display. We also do publish, we have over the years published a number of articles, especially in the reader, that describe what the tree committee is doing as well as providing on tree maintenance and care around the year. But the, the big news, of course, is this year is we're celebrating Arbor Day. This is the hundred and fiftieth year of the celebration of Arbor Day in the United States. So it's, it's a big deal. And we've kind of had sort of a nominal celebration of Arbor Day in the past, but I have to give credit to Maeve here, who has really taken the bull by the horns and has brought a lot of enthusiasm and creativity, as well as her, she, her knowledge and her landscape background and has put together a much, much bigger event than Sandpoint has ever seen for Arbor Day. And I think I might just turn this over to her and let her explain. But the large number of groups are involved, large number of activities for adults and children. So Maeve, why don't you say a few words?
Thank you for that nice segue. So Arbor Day this year is gonna be really neat because I, of course, wanted to meet the community, and this was a good way to do that. And I've met several of the partners that are gonna be sponsoring different workshops. This year, the city is gonna celebrate it on Saturday, May seventh, from ten AM to two PM at Lakeview Park. We're gonna do something typical, which is plant a tree and have a celebration, and we'll be reading the proclamation and have a ceremony for that tree. That tree is actually funded by the grant that, I think about a month ago, I was asking for permission for the grant, and we received a grant from the Idaho Nursery and Landscape Association for three hundred dollars, and that pays for the tree itself. And then we have several workshops throughout the day from various nonprofits and different organizations. So the Bonner County Historical Society, the Kinnixu Land Trust, the soil, the Bonner County Soil Conservation District, the Idaho Department of Forestry, and many, many more are all coming together to have different workshops throughout the day. One of the highlights that I think is new to this is the local chapter of landscape architects. There's one licensed landscape architect in town. Her name is Karen Olson, and she has a firm here called Sightlines. And it's right down the road here, actually Sightline Design. And she has several designers that work for her, and they're going to be doing a workshop where every hour, so four workshops throughout the day, they can host up to eighteen people. And it will be a little bit of a design, landscape design workshop. So that's pretty unique and something different. And then there's going to be a scavenger hunt where you can get a map, and you can go around all the different workshops and collect a sticker. And at the end, if you've gone to certain key ones, and you've learned how to take care of a tree and learned how to, how to be a good steward, then you can get a seedling, a free tree. So we have all of these different things coming together, and you're gonna hear more about this over the next couple of weeks. But this is the official invitation and the kickoff to that planning. So and did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Did we give the date for the?
Oh, yes, Saturday, Saturday, May seventh. Yes, yes. And the official date is actually April thirtieth at the national level, but that doesn't work well with our schedule, so we're going with the seventh. All right, well, thank you. With that, I'm gonna transition over to Mr. Jim Plot. And Jim Plot is a consulting arborist, and he is here. He's gonna tell you about the urban forestry master planning effort that we're kicking off that Jennifer had mentioned. And there is a document in front of you that Jim will tell you a little bit more about. But today was the first day of him working with staff and doing interviews. We've been touring all around the city, looking at various trees that we're going to be doing a robust, detailed scientific inventory. And that's gonna give us the baseline. This master plan will be the foundation for a lot of our decision making and management going forward to realize more cost savings and efficiencies and how we manage and to streamline the process. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim, and you can share away.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maeve, and thanks for your time tonight, counsel. So as Maeve said, I'm a consulting arborist. And my company, we do projects with the municipalities all across the country. In fact, we're, we've had projects from Hawaii to Hong Kong. So we work with a lot of cities of varying sizes. So this is a process we're very familiar with. We can follow industry standards, ANSI standards, and everything that we do as far as practices. What you have before you is just an outline of the topics that are going to be in the management plan. So as Maeve said, we just really kicked this off today. Well, actually, we didn't. We started ways back with, the first thing we did was meet with the tree committee, and that was last year. And with staff changes and such, there was a delay in some of the projects happening, but we're back on track now, thanks to Maeve and Jennifer again. So today was a meeting with staff, as Jennifer announced. Part of the process is getting public input on this because they own the trees. So we know how to manage the trees, but we wanna have something unique to the socioeconomic and characteristic of Sandpoint's population. What do they value as far as trees? So aside from assessing the trees and looking at what we need from a harbor culture standpoint, then we want public input as well as to how this is all gonna happen. So that's part of the process. That's really, in urban forestry, you manage trees and people, and that's what we're doing with the process, with the plan. And every one of these bullet points and that you see in the table of contents will be covered in the plan through the processes that I just described. So that's not a whole lot of information at this time. One, because we don't have a whole lot of information. We haven't conducted the inventory yet, which drives the plan. This is much like if you were managing a product in a warehouse. If you don't know what's in the warehouse, you can't manage it. So we do a complete assessment of the trees on the right of way and in the parks. We won't be doing all these trees because the funding is limited. So we're gonna do as many as we can, which will provide a pretty good baseline for the characteristics of the tree population in Sandpoint. And then that information goes into developing maintenance needs, risk issues, overall management of the trees, budgeting, all that will be looked at. So we look at where is the urban forestry program at at this stage in Sandpoint? And where do you wanna be? And how do we get there? And that's kind of what the plan does, is build this program. So it's the initial step in moving your program forward. So that's a quick overview of the process, so.
Okay, council, have any questions?
Not questions, observations. So there was a, and I wish that John wouldn't have left so soon. He's a very passionate citizen that did a very good job with fighting for a very large pine tree at one of the, one of the community centers here. So what you're about ready to do is very important to many of us in our town. These trees, especially soon, are one of the main reasons why we walk around and enjoy this place. So the inventorying is gonna be important, which we appreciate. And I recall that there was a time that we had a booklet that almost was similar to a treasure hunt, to go around town and find some of these legacy trees that we have. So I'd like to see maybe that come back, so.
Yeah, that's very easy to do because how we collect the data is built into the ArcGIS system already. So the city can incorporate the data, and then they can generate fun things to do like that with trees. So you're welcome.
And as the spouse of a retired forester, I love trees. So thank you very much for taking care of the trees.
That's why I do what I do. Oh, it's a good gig. You get paid to walk around and look at trees.
I know, right?
Pretty cool.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
A couple of things I would note about this as well. So as Maeve mentioned, Jim has been here working with us all day today. One of the first meetings started this morning is we have our urban forestry plan that council also hears, and we'll probably be getting an update in the near future timber management in our watershed. So we've had two very distinct tree management programs here at the city. And there was a good meeting this morning with Greg Lanning, our utilities director, and Maeve then representing our urban forestry program, and Jim and Mike Wocott, who is our, is our, who manages our urban or our tree management program in the watershed. So really looking at comprehensively, how are we looking? How are we managing our trees from the watershed all the way down to the urban area? Because it really does relate to water quality here in the city as well. And through looking at how we might combine our resources and be more thoughtful holistically in our efforts to, it may open up some financial resources for maintenance of the programs as well. One thing I would note for council as well with this master plan and recommendations ultimately that will come through the master plan, much like our master planning in other areas across the city, including arts, culture, historic preservation. One of the things that Jim will be looking at through this master plan is our tree committee, our structure, our membership of the tree committee. So earlier tonight, council had some reappointment recommendations from the mayor that was on your consent agenda. At this time, the mayor's recommendation is to hold off on appointment of any additional members, which is consistent with what's happened with our other committees and commissions as we've been going through a master planning process until we get to the end of the master planning, which may very well recommend different structure for tree committee moving forward. So I don't know what that looks like, and Jim probably has some initial ideas. But at this point, the mayor is not considering additional applications to the tree committee because we're in the middle of this process. But doesn't mean that the public can't participate. There will be some community workshops, the surveys. So as we move forward with this master planning process, there are opportunities for the community to participate in the urban forestry program, but it will be through the master planning process as opposed to on the tree committee, which acts as kind of a steering committee working with us in conjunction with this process. But public opportunity will be through the master planning process itself. So I just wanna make a note about a couple of those things and really that synergy with watershed and urban forestry. And I think in looking at how comprehensively we're thinking about things will be a more efficient way to manage our resources moving forward.
Thank you.
So as Bob said earlier, trees are what makes cities livable. Beyond that, it's concrete and gray infrastructure. So they're critical to everything we do, and they interact with everything in the city. So that's why they're so valuable, and they're actually, any city across the world, it's the only asset that a city owns that appreciates in value as it ages. Think about that one.
Thank you very much. Pardon me, I'm at the end of a sinus infection here. For the final agenda, item on the agenda, staff seeks authorization to proceed with a request for proposals for cleaning the discharge pond at the Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant. I will now yield the floor to Utilities Director Greg Lanning for an explanation and to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Madam President and the members of the council. Greg Lanning, your Utilities Director. Our topic tonight is a, the Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant Discharge Pond Cleaning Services. And the request to council is to seek permission to proceed with going out for proposals for that service. And I have a short presentation. I was asked to make sure it was short, but I couldn't, I couldn't.
Always have show and tell, so we like that.
Wow, yeah, but I got props. I have a, well, I keep it short, Greg, I could do that. The Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant is way cool. It's our old treatment plant up on Little Sand Creek. And the diversion itself dates back to, oh, the forties, nineteen forties. And the plant was built in nineteen sixty five and then upgraded in nineteen ninety seven. More to, you know, more automation than anything on that plant. And it's known as a conventional water treatment plant. And by that, we filter the water through a media, a medium. And it's, it works through gravity. It's very simple, but very effective and, and a real benefit to our system. And what comes to mind when we talk about the, the Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant is that, that older proven technology on the hill that still works and still services us in every way versus the last item I came to you with, remember, was that tube with all the fibers in the center? Whereas we ran the water through the fibers through ultra filtration, you know, on low pressure. And that's how, through filtration, we purified the water at the lake treatment plant. That was the, what we called the all filter treatment upgrades. And it was all about the cellophides. And this week, we've been executing exactly that agreement that you proved back in the day. And this is pretty much the heart and soul of what these upgrades were about at the lake water treatment plant. These are the cellophides. We get electrical signals in through the bottom, pushes it through the cellophides, and then the cellophides through air pneumatics then actuate the valves. And so we can dial. And so we can dial back then the air pressure as to exactly how those valves operate and how quickly. And so through the software and through the celinoids, we operate the lake treatment plant. On the other hand, up at the, the old conventional plant, we just run it through anthracite, good carbon. We don't hear that very much anymore. It sets on top of sand also and then another media down below that. And then we backwash it with water and air, the opposite direction. When we're through backwashing, then it all settles back exactly where it's supposed to be with the anthracite on top, the sand and the other media down below. And so it's real simple and through specific gravity that media works and it filters the water. And by filtering it, it just simply collects or coagulates the, the particles essentially. And so the backwash then cleans that. The backwash then goes to a pond and the pond is supposed to be, if operating properly, large enough for it to settle out those solids before then a discharge water, remember the, the reject water, if you will, then gets discharged back to Little Sand Creek in this case. That's the pond and over years, it's been, because it's settled out, it's filled up. So we need to clean that pond back out and put it back to what its useful design was in terms of settling out. Plus, it's a contact time for dechlorination. We add sulfate to that, so it's dechlorified, so we can then discharge it back to the creek in a harmless way. So the recommended action then is to authorize the solicitation of proposals for Little Sand Creek Treatment Pond Cleaning Services. And that's my short presentation tonight.
Does Council have any questions?
Good.
He keeps threatening you or something.
I know, it's like, thank goodness that big guy left, right? Gun and the badge. I think I could outrun him.
Does Council have any questions? I'm sorry.
Just have a statement, to be able to make something so complex understandable to somebody like me, you know your stuff, man. That's great.
All right on, Councilman. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Out for Madam President and council members, I can out Greg a little bit, especially since he was poking fun at me, me tonight a little bit. He missed his calling as a teacher, as you can see. He recently, the alternative school had called and asked for somebody to come in and talk about stormwater. And so immediately I said, well, Greg's the person and sent it upstairs, which he just relished in. And, and now they're looking at installing a, a rain garden there at the high school as a result of this presentation from Greg. So he, he's missed his calling as a teacher and I do have to say, I'm just going to call it out right here. I saw you out my window this afternoon, out on the basketball court, dressed like this, playing basketball with the kids too. So he really relishes those teaching opportunities.
Listen, man, we'll farm you out, but we're not going to lose you. You can moonlight all you want, but we're going to keep it.
Next time you see me with my kids out there, you can come join me.
Yes, it's so cool and I wanted to, but I, yeah.
Would anybody from the public like to comment on this matter, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to authorize staff to proceed with a request for proposals for cleaning the discharge pond at the Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote?
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
All right then, with no further business before the council, this meeting is now adjourned at 6:25 PM.